Board of School Directors, State of the Nation Meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Online.
Oh, he's online. Okay, okay.
Bonnie will take it from here.
Philip Bonner, Europe.
Is that Bonnie?
Yes.
Mr. Bova.
Here.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Here.
Mrs. Delaney.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Ms. Mungo.
Here.
Dr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Ritter.
Here.
Mrs. Warning.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so our first order of business is the election of the temporary president. President, sorry. And that president shall be elected among the holdover members. In an election year, holdover members and members who have not terms will not expire. They're beginning anew. So the holdover members, you see up here. And we need a nomination for the temporary president.
Make a motion to nominate. Mrs. Sarucci.
Second.
Okay. I need that, but do we have a motion to close those nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
That has been made. Okay, we'll call those. Ms. Isher.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mrs. Delaney.
Aye.
Mrs. McBride.
Aye.
Ms. Mungo.
Aye.
Dr. Singh.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
And Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Let me get you that there.
All right, it's been a long time. Try it out. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bova, fellow board members. We want to proceed with the election of our president. Our nominating committee of Mrs. Delaney and Mrs. Warning were appointed to be the immediate past president. What does that mean?
They were appointed by the immediate past president. Mr. Bova.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay, so what we're going to do is take a look at this ballot that was prepared based on their nominations that all of our board members have. Our nominees for president currently are Mr. Jack Bova and Mr. John Ritter. We can take more motions for president from the floor. Would anybody like to nominate anyone else for president at this time? Okay, we see none. Election of this office shall be by majority of those present and voting. If there is no majority achieved on the first ballot, a second ballot will be cast for the top two candidates. The board secretary will read the results in public, including how each board member -- and then the gavel will be passed to the new elected president. So at this time, I'm going to direct board members to find your ballot for president, check the box, and then Mrs. Isher will collect those. Please vote for only one.
Thank you.
Do not have to date it.
Here's the selections for president. Mr. Williams, I -- you're not present in the room, so I'd --
Well, he can cast an oral vote if he wants.
Mr. Williams, would you like to cast a verbal vote?
I vote for Jack Bova.
Thank you. We have Ms. Mungo. She voted for Jack Bova. Dr. Singh, he voted for Jack Bova. Mr. Ritter voted for Mr. Ritter. Mr. Bova voted for Mr. Bova. Mrs. Sarucci voted for Mr. Bova. Mrs. Delaney voted for Mr. Bova. Mrs. Warning voted for Mr. Bova. And Ms. McBride voted for Mr. Bova. Gap passed. Back to Mr. Bova.
Sweet. We got Mr. Bova. Congratulations on another year of service, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Okay, now we're going to move on to the election of vice president. And once again, just as we did before, we have a ballot in front of us. We're going to need to go through all the details again, right? Everyone make one selection for the vice president. The secretary will pick that up in the same deal majority necessary to win.
Mr. Williams.
Wait. Scotty, wait until she collects the ballots. Go ahead. Okay, Scotty, you want to cast your ballot for vice president?
Scotty, the three nominees are John Ritter, Susan Delaney, and Leslie McBride. And you can, I guess, also select another.
Thank you.
So pick from those three.
I vote for Leslie McBride.
Okay, Mr. Bova, Mr. Bova voted for Leslie McBride. Mrs. Delaney voted for -- Mrs. Delaney. Mrs. Warning voted for Mrs. Delaney. Ms. Mungo voted for Mrs. Delaney. Dr. Singh voted for Mrs. Delaney. Mr. Ritter voted for Mr. Ritter. Mrs. Sarucci voted for Mr. Ritter. And Ms. McBride voted for Ms. McBride. And let's see. Yeah, we do not have a majority of five.
Okay, so now, so now what you do under your rules, you eliminate the person who got the least number of votes, and you'll have the remaining two.
Yes, okay, so we're going to eliminate Mr. Ritter. It looks like we have --
Mr. Ritter had two, Mrs. Delaney had four, Ms. McBride had four.
I don't have a second ballot.
Sorry, three. Ms. McBride had three. Mrs. Delaney had four, Mr. Ritter had two.
So that the remaining two would be Mrs. Delaney and Mrs. McBride.
That's correct.
Just want us to use some blank paper.
Please use blank paper. I didn't anticipate this. And I do apologize.
Write somebody's name on the back.
Anybody should write your name.
Write your name on it as well. Yes, that's what she said.
Yes, write your name on it so she knows you haven't dated. Well, I don't want anybody coming back and say they weren't dated. It's on camera, the world. Doesn't that count?
McBride and Droni. It's on YouTube forever.
Bonnie, you still have this.
Scotty.
Okay, Scotty, you want to cast the ballot?
One of two.
I vote for Leslie McBride.
Let me write that down. I have a coffee. Okay, Leslie McBride. Okay, Mr. Bova, Mr. Bova voted for Leslie McBride. Mr. Ritter votes for Leslie McBride. Dr. Mendel Singh votes for Mrs. Delaney. Ms. Mungo votes for Mrs. Delaney. Leslie McBride votes for Leslie McBride. Susan Delaney votes for Susan Delaney. And Valerie Warning votes for Mrs. Delaney. It's a blank. And Mary Best Sarucci votes for Mrs. McBride. Two, three, four, five. Leslie McBride has five votes. She's the vice president.
Congratulations, Mrs. McBride.
Thank you.
Have you anything you'd like to say? Just kidding. Number six is a schedule of school board meetings for 2023.
Resolve that the Gateway School Board of Director sets the calendar of school board meetings for 2023 as attached and authorizes secretary to advertise said meetings in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sarucci, second by Mrs. Warning.
Question.
You can get the next one. No, she actually made the motion.
And this is for the calendar, so I can roll call. Mrs. Delaney.
Aye.
Mrs. McBride.
Aye.
Ms. Mungo.
Aye.
Dr. Singh.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
Aye.
And Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to your appointment of the solicitor.
Motion to reappoint Bruce Dice and his associates.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please, Ms. Isher.
Mrs. McBride.
Aye.
Ms. Mungo.
Aye.
Dr. Singh.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mrs. Delaney.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we adjourned. Everybody ready to get back to the set?
Let's go.
Mr. President.
Now, we've got Gateway's Board of School Directors meeting. A regular board meeting, again, Tuesday, December 6, 2022. We're going to pledge allegiance again.
I'm still trying to catch up. Hold on. Okay, we do have two people who have called in advance to speak, so if you're taking those first.
We actually need to do another roll call. We're all here, ready for the good doing.
I guess we should. Mr. Bova.
Here.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Here.
Mrs. Delaney.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Ms. Mungo.
Here.
Mr. Ritter.
Here.
Dr. Singh.
Here.
Mrs. Warning.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
So we have comments from residents on agenda items. We have two folks who have made requests to speak. The first is Reverend Lindsay White.
Lucy has to go to practice. Is the only chance that the student can go first?
Yes.
Would that be okay?
Student rap first.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm so sorry. She has to go to practice. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to go to practice.
Priorities.
So I'm giving the high school updates for November and December so far.
You passed the month where we haven't been Friday.
So the Gators is giving back the senior house council hosted its second turkey trot this year. Congratulations to Albronte Henne Camp, Trill, McCoy, and Chris Lindsay coming in first, second, and third places, respectively, in the turkey trot 5K race Wednesday. Also in a shootout tomorrow, Mr. Christopher Askew also participated in the racing. So thanks to Mr. Don Hall, Mrs. Jill Cosette, Mrs. Betty, Mrs. Anne Murray, Miss Dawn Schreiber, Miss Carol Ravens, Mr. Matt Sorkis, and the rest of the family for their assistance in bringing the event together. Lastly, thank you to all the -- thank you to all. We raised $1,100 for the Gators families in the season. We also, the SGA also sent clear packages for cancer patients. Thank you. Thanks to many condiments from the Gateway School District faculty and staff. SGA created 75 clear packages for Cancer Center. These gifts were delivered to Thanksgiving by SGA students, bringing smiles to many cancer patients in the neighborhood. They wrapped gifts, including items such as lip balm, moisturizer, and hand sanitizer. We've also been competing in a lot of things. The Gateway, a Gateway should take second place in the SAT Word Master Competition. Congratulations to Jada Settles, the High of City, Lydia Blast, and Ketabround for earning second place at the Eastern Suburban Special Programs Association, SAT Word Master Competition hosted by Franklin Regional High School. The competition consists of various families of SAT vocab reports. There are 20 teams competing in this competition. Great job there, Gateway English Department, for continuously challenging and expanding their vocab. Two other Gateway teams of students competed at this competition. Also, team number two, Nate Twinkle, Blake Marsh, Bob Sir, Odoat Bay, Sid, and Zach Matichenko. There are those of thirteen, Limal, Mortay, Zane. Sadim, Boogie, and Joshua Beal. Our Gateway students attended the first ever Pittsburgh Robotics Discovery Day. On Wednesday, November 16, students from the High School Robotics Team and A and Program attended the first annual Pittsburgh Robotics Network Discovery Day at David L. Lawrence Convention Center. There were over 100 vendors represented from the Pittsburgh region. A thousand people came out to learn why Pittsburgh is called the robotics capital. Students were immersed in the word robotics through demonstrations, hands-on activities, and networking. Students were made aware of massive amounts of resources, opportunities, and talent in the robotics field in their own backyard. And that -- oh, nope, on the page. Also, the Science Club hosted Dr. Rachel Barkey, positive science scientist. Dr. Rachel shared her research as well as her career path available in psychology and neuroscience to AP Statistics and AP Psychology classes, along with the Science Club. And also, Gateway High School engineering experience. Last Thursday, six high school students participated in the annual Westinghouse Introduce to Engineering Day. The event was hosted by Pittsburgh chapter of women in nuclear and the Westhouse Walts Mill Facility. The morning began with a networking session with an engineer, a safety briefing, nuclear trivia games, nuclear power basics, and a presentation of various engineering disciplines. Next, they participated in four different workshops focusing on radiation protection, nuclear technology, parts of a reactor, carefully half-life of a fuel rig, a nuclear fuel and reactor and fuel mockups. Finally, the engineer hosted a Ask Me Anything and Career Panel for the participants to learn about the many pathways to successful careers. After experience, they all agree that becoming an engineer could be in their future. That is all.
Listen, could I ask you to do one thing? I have a sense that we didn't do enough to promote particularly the turkey trot, the other things you guys are doing. And I think part of it might be our somewhat attenuated attention span, but part of it is that it kind of slips our attention. So in the coming year, when you have something coming up, you know, get word to us earlier so that in a meeting, we can talk about it at length, the thing you're going to be doing and the purpose and how the community can support it. Okay?
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, get to work now. Get going.
Thank you.
As always been. All right, now we're ready for Reverend Lindsay White.
I'm Reverend Lindsay White, pastor at Crossroads Presbyterian Church on Heaker Ridge, and resident 2132 Ramsey Road. And I'm reading a statement on behalf of the Monroeville Interfaith Ministerium. And if I have time with you, I'm going to give you one sentence of my personal opinion. In keeping with the Monroeville Interfaith Ministerium's mission statement, which states, "The purpose of the ministerium shall be to promote in Monroeville area fellowship among the religious leaders, respect, understanding, and cooperation among people of all faiths, goodwill, compassion, and justice." I share this statement in the ministerium's name. At times, celebrating diversity takes courage. This is one of those times. The resolution which stands before you, which would name the Friday after Thanksgiving for the holiday of Diwali, beginning in the 2023-2024 school year, is an opportunity for the Gateway School District's calendar to better represent the diversity of Monroeville and Pitt Car. Diwali represents inner light over spiritual darkness, knowledge over ignorance, good over evil. It is observed by the Hindu, Jain, Sikh, and part of the Buddhist communities, and therefore in and of itself celebrates diversity. Because of the generosity of how the resolution was presented, it would not entail an additional day off from school. What it would do is provide an impetus to learn more about one another in keeping with Gateway's mission statement, to develop lifelong learners who will be productive citizens in a diverse and changing world. In adding Diwali to our calendar, Gateway would join 22 other Pennsylvania school districts who recognize this holiday. As the ministerium, we strongly support the passage of this resolution for two primary reasons. It is a message of affirmation to our students and staff who celebrate Diwali, and it would positively reflect on our school district as it works to be more inclusive. As a personal resident and the mom of a daughter, we chose to live in Gateway School District because of its diversity, and we hope that in 16 years, when our daughter graduates from Gateway School District, she will be a better citizen because of things like this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Rabbi Barbara Simons.
Thank you. So also a resident of Monroeville. So first, congratulations to Mr. Bova, to Ms. McBride, to Mr. Ruth, and to Mr. Dice. So I was named in the last meeting in terms of tabling this resolution, and I'm honored that you see me in that position and a little bit odd, thanks to us. I'm only representing myself, but because I do stand with the ministerium's statement, there are certainly similarities to it. I do think that generosity is a word that should be associated with this resolution. Diwali, I learned, and it's great to have a learning opportunity shifts by the lunar calendar, but within certain limits. So my understanding is that between October and November is when Diwali falls. It does not necessarily fall on the Friday after Thanksgiving, right? So the generosity is in having not only on a given day, but on specifically a day when there already is no Diwali. But I also want to note that we also have holidays off that do shift in the calendar. So while I could say Easter, it doesn't exactly make sense. I mean, I know that -- all right, you both can correct me. I think I know that after the winter solstice, there's the first new moon, and it's the Sunday after. Yes. Is when Easter falls. So again, it's a Sunday, so it doesn't affect school, but it means that Good Friday is off, right? Good Friday moves around the calendar, right? Many of us celebrate holidays that are based on the lunar calendar. So Eid in the Muslim tradition, all of our holidays, in the Jewish tradition. So choosing a date when already there is no schools hopefully makes this easier. So as we heard, it's already an interfaith holiday because of the four religions that celebrate it. Voting no, because the floodgates will open and other minorities will come forward, is not a good enough reason, because it says that only Christian holidays can be recognized by the Gateway School District. Voting yes is an action that you honor the diversity of Gateway students and those residents of Monroeville and Pitt Car. And voting yes, as we heard, is a vote for Gateway's mission statement, to develop lifelong learners who will be productive citizens in a diverse and changing world. So my hope is that you will vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else with comments on agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Michael Lutz. I am a local resident. Thank you for hearing me. I love to see what's happening here, people who will give up their evening to help steer this community and this school in the right direction as best as possible under the freedoms and opportunities that we have as American citizens. Now, at our local level, I would succinctly say that I think it wise not to begin including any various and otherwise new religious festivals into our school district. I work with employment and young teenagers who are coming out of this Monroeville school district. And to have just one more day where they are refocused on religious and spiritual items such as the goddess, that is the purpose of Diwali, to me makes little sense. Science, technology, engineering, and math, and the teaching of those things is the job of a school district. This is not a church. This is not a home. As we come together, I believe that the simplistic teaching of things that are attainable, scientific, and not spiritual in nature is wise. As we bring these children to school each day, and I have checked on different things that have to do with religious and legal issues concerning this matter, I don't think it wise for the Monroeville school district to bite off more than they can chew, more than they are ready to prepare to establish as a religious holiday. My hope is that we, as parents, executors, directors, servants of the children in this area, allow it to families to teach their children faith. We have nationally recognized holidays, and although 22 other school districts in this state have forwarded this as an importance, I think Monroeville would be wise to side with numerous other school districts who have not, and allow religious, spiritual recognitions to be left aside, and to allow the school districts to teach science, technology, engineering, and math, especially in light of what are our children, my children, have lost during COVID and the change in teaching. They are at a loss, and this is not a time to veer to the side to support spiritual initiatives and recognitions, but rather to stay with what is concrete, scientific, and mathematical so that our children may prosper. Thank you. My name is Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Good evening to all of you. My name is Harirah Hattel, and I'm a 44-year resident of Monroeville, joined in 1978. Just to reiterate the gentleman, we are talking about spiritual holidays. Christmas and Easter are already a great holiday which are of spiritual nature and given to Shulans. This particular holiday, firstly, doesn't even take the day off from your school board official number of 180 days, which are required for it. Number two, not knowing other part of the world has been keeping this country in dark, and that's my very personal observation for large hippehiors in this country. There is very little knowledge among the people of other faith, particularly Christians and others, some Christian, Islamic religion. They have no knowledge about these things, and they just throw away other Islam religions. And if you want to live in a peace and harmony with the world and locally, you've got to have diversity, recognize it, learn about them, and then where there is a possibility even -- diversity, recognize it, learn about them, and then where there is a possibility, even celebrate their things also, because we also participate in Christmas. I am a Hindu, practicing Hindu, and I go to every possible place in country or world, doesn't matter which place it is. So I highly recommend that this particular day should be given, if not anything else, as educational. I understand the STEM. I am a student of STEM, how my family is a student of STEM, but liberal arts is also equally important. All those colleges of liberal arts are probably well-known more than the STEM college except MIT and CNM. So if you think of STEM is the only thing required for the better life, it is totally a wrong concept. STEM is required for better life in technological part. If you want to live happily, in harmony and peace with the rest of the world, you've got to know liberal arts courses and history and law of those things. And what is being taught here in terms of a history is practically one person of the rest of the history except Europe and United States. So my highly recommend is that you consider this particular proposal made by Ravine. I have been also a member of Ravine for many years, and I know what the roots of the town is. That's what my recommendation is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else? So I'd just like to say this, first of all. This, we're discussing a matter that has been tabled, so we'll get to this later on the agenda. More than that, I'd like to thank everyone who came forward. Mr. Lutz? This wasn't point counterpoint, but I think you presented your argument beautifully, as did everyone. I won't for a moment say this is the ideal world, this is how it should work. We tabled this so that we had a chance to gather input from the community. I got a number of emails from a number of folks in the community. We interacted, I know, I think everyone else did. You get to make your viewpoint known calmly, reasonably, rationally. We're going to vote at some point. We'll see how it goes. But I want to thank everyone for how they've handled this, so that when we have the next contentious matter, we can do it the same way. We can do it the same way and advance the school district as best we can. So if anyone has anything else, fine. If not, we're going to move on to board member discussion items. Anybody have anything they'd like to touch on tonight? All right, and let's go on to minutes of previous meetings.
Here are the motions. Help me out here. Where's Scotty? John makes the second.
Ms. Mungo made the motion.
John makes the second.
Any questions on this? Previously held meetings, that would be November 9, November 15, and December 1st. Nope? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, let's go, Dr. Short.
Thank you, Mr. Bova. Moving right along, section B, financial reports. Mr. Zarellis.
Thank you, Dr. Short. Resolved that Gateway Board of School Directors approve Sections B1, list of bills, and B3 budget transfers as listed in Section B Tuesday, December 6, 2022, regular board meeting. Item 1, financial reports. Section B1 lists the bills December 2022, and Section B3 budget transfers December 2022.
No move.
Second.
Beautiful. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on this section? Roll call, please, Bonnie.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mrs. Delaney.
Aye.
Mrs. McBride.
Aye.
Ms. Mungo.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Dr. Singh.
Aye.
Mrs. Mourning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
And Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Section C, items previously tabled. We have one resolution presented by a board member. Dr. Singh, would you like to read this? First off, we would have to untable it. Yes. Correct.
Motion's been made and seconded to untable.
Was that Leslie made the motion?
Leslie, yes.
And Robert's second?
Val's second.
Oh, Val? Okay.
All in favor to untable?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
All right, so it is untabled. Can we read the resolution now?
The resolution declaring Diwali Gateway School District, the school holiday, starting 2023-2024 school year. The Friday after Thanksgiving holiday for Diwali holiday changed the public school government.
Thank you.
Show moved.
Second.
That motion has been made and seconded. Now, do we have any questions?
I don't have a question. I do want to sort of have a question. As I appreciate the education about the Diwali, I personally don't feel that a school board should govern cultures or religious holidays as it has, they have all been taken off and all the names changed. And we can't choose, pick and choose which ones to celebrate, as I do know that we're not getting another day off. But, and I'm not saying we're going to say no because there's going, it's going to open up a door, but I think we're going to run out of days, and this would bring something to the table that the first people that come and ask us to celebrate or recognize something would be the only ones that make it real, and five days in this holiday party. There are a lot more religious holidays, cultural holidays, and celebrations that need to be recognized. So with that being said, I do want to thank Dr. Singh for learning about Diwali, and that had me thinking. Instead of just recognizing Diwali, I had some conversations with Dr. Short about, you know how you open up your Google Calendar, and all of the holidays are listed on your Google Calendar? Doing something like that on our school calendar and using other types of media to recognize, not necessarily having a day off or a particular day, but whatever day it falls on, putting it on the calendars, and again, using other media so that people learn about all of them, and use the community input on the ones that should be or can be on the calendar, and using the Google Calendar and other resources to just list them, and then we'll learn more about just one. That was my thought.
Well, you know, kind of going back and forth.
Yeah, because I don't.
Because we are such a diverse community, and there are so many other religions. And if you look on our calendar right now, we don't have Christmas and Hanukkah break, we have winter break, and we don't have Easter and Passover break, we have spring break. We have spring break.
Well, you're looking at me. Am I allowed to speak?
Not really, and Ms. Sarucci, finish your thought.
Well, that was my thought, so we have, I mean, Thanksgiving is a federal holiday. Honestly, haven't decided how I'm voting on this. Appreciating the discussion of my colleagues here on this. You know, we could go with a flat-out federal holidays, and that's it. I mean, I don't know. I really don't know. Anybody else, please, share your thoughts?
Yes. Describing being off December 25th as anything except Christmas is just disingenuous.
All right. Well, on the calendar, but her point, though, I miss my understanding, on the calendar, it says Christmas or winter break.
Political reasons, you know.
Right. Everything's political. We can't, everything's political.
It's Christmas.
So.
It's that simple. We've opened the door. We have a religious holiday that we recognize across the board. Christians got there first.
And you know what's funny? This is a funny story. One of the, all right, one of the reasons that, well, before I was on a school board, my son brought home his elementary school textbook, and of course, it had to be politically correct, and in that book, it listed the federal holidays of the United States of America, and it listed all the holidays except Christmas, because we didn't want to offend people by putting Christmas in the student book. However, Christmas is a recognized federal holiday. So the book was actually inaccurate. You remember this? Because I came and I talked to our director of curriculum at the time, and I pulled a website from the National Archives, and it had the holidays, and it didn't have all of it. So, my point of the story is that this has really always been a political and a contentious type of an issue. And no matter which way any of us vote, somebody else is going to be mad at us.
Absolutely. That's how this works. There's rarely a subject that we vote on. It doesn't work out.
You're leaving me out. You're the most popular religion or the preferred, and you're leaving this person
out, and, you know, you're trying to come up with a great idea to somehow make everybody feel included.
When we find we're flooded with requests to honor holidays, and wise heads pick a particular date to be Religious Observation Day. I don't know. I have no idea. What I know is this one's in front of us. This resolution was proposed. The doctor Singh went out of his way to pick a day that would not in any way disrupt learning. We know we have policies where people can take off days, correct, Dr. Short, for their religious holidays without it essentially being an absence.
Correct. Analyzed.
So provisions already exist for religious things. We're going to vote on this to see if it's reasonable. Five of us think it's reasonable to have this day or not, and then we'll move on. And if someone comes up and asks for a day to recognize their holiday, do it again, and perhaps we'll set a precedent now. I don't know. We'll see.
Yeah, I'm looking at the fact that the day after Thanksgiving, to me, that's a shopping day. That's not a religious holiday. That's not, it's not a holiday. Thanksgiving is, Thanksgiving has been recognized as a holiday, and also even the day after, many of the indigenous.
Indigenous people, that's exactly right.
So to say that we are only recognizing religious holidays, and we have Friday as the day after Thanksgiving, and I remember when the Monday came in as the hunting day.
I was just about to bring that up. Traditionally, Monday has always been primarily for.
Now, I took them gladly, because I always wanted them. But to look at them as legitimate over what I call whether it's a religious or a cultural holiday, which we can accept and recognize, Black Friday and Hunting Monday.
We're not really off school for Black Friday.
And rifle season has shifted to Saturdays, so to Monday. So I hear any other, any other.
What are they talking about?
Talk that you're going to change that back to Monday.
Really? It's interesting.
Do we have any other questions or comments on this particular resolution?
Sure. I'd just like to say that this is, there's an underlying implicit expectation that we all should celebrate diversity. I am one who does not implicitly celebrate diversity, I celebrate truth. Say that again. I do not look toward and worship and revere diversity, because there are good people and bad people in the world, right? If we're going to be inclusive, we should include terrible people rather than heroes, right? But we don't want to have inclusion. We don't want to have diversity. We want to pick our heroes, right? Rather than to follow the truth. The truth is an order of magnitude higher than our interpretation today of cultural winners or losers, or cultural heroes. Today's cultural heroes or political heroes might be tomorrow's monsters, right?
Who's truth?
Yes, that's the underlying implicit discussion between what I said. Which truth is it? Truth is the truth. It's not my truth, it is the truth. You don't win, and I don't win. The truth wins.
So can you stare this back to Diwali?
Right. So some of the comments from the resident was, this is implicit, this is a way to celebrate diversity by including some named holiday. So we named Diwali as one of them. The counterargument to that was, there could be more than just Diwali that could be celebrated, right? And so in honor of, and then we said diversity inclusion, we picked, we used that as a leverage to help motivate our thinking to allow this to come in. However, I'm saying, my name's John Ritter, diversity, equity, inclusion are not my underlying themes. The truth is, whether I like it or not, whether it's diverse or not, whether it's inclusive or not, and whether it's equitable or not, the truth should be our goal in education, not those other things. Those are culturally, the flavor of the moment.
You're saying the truth should be our goal in education, but you are looking at the truth from a spiritual or from a religious perspective. To me, when I think of the truth.
Not a spiritual or religious thing. The truth is itself.
Truth is objective, and truth is absolute. That's what's.
Jack, that's not proposition.
The truth is objective and absolute. Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Jack, since you opened this up, can I repeat?
We didn't.
I didn't. I didn't.
Somehow, God had a note.
Well, it didn't.
Can I say one thing, maybe, to wrap this conversation?
I think we're ready to vote, you boys. I'm pretty sure we're.
Well, I'm going to say, because I think you're not going to accomplish what you want.
She'll be right back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, take a moment, then.
All right. I'm not going to go over there to say that for doing it. Sure, voice, number eight. What happened with our social studies curriculum in this school district? Do we not teach world cultures anymore? Do we know that this is such a? See, putting Diwali the day after Thanksgiving is not going to get you what you want. I mean, you can go ahead and do it. You recognize it. It's a nice recognition, but 99% of the people are going to think it's a day after Thanksgiving, and no one's going to realize that you're celebrating Diwali and what it means. We used to tab world cultures in Gateway a million years ago when I was a student, and what we studied was cultures, religions, and governments, various kinds of the world. If we're not teaching that today, that's where you're failing. Putting Diwali on the day after Thanksgiving is not going to get you what you want. What we need to do is reintroduce world cultures back into the thing. And I thought when my daughters were in Gateway, we had a day at the high school where they had a multicultural festival, where people came in and they had food and dance and costumes and all those kinds of things. I think the community, the community members here, and the school district can go back to doing those kinds of things. I don't have a problem with learning those kinds of things, like through social studies and having world cultures. Learned, I learned a lot. That was a million years ago, when we didn't even have these conversations. So if you vote on that, that's nice, it'll be on the calendar, but you're not going to get the recognition and the understanding by the vast majority of people by putting it on the day after Thanksgiving. People will go, it's a day after Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you. To answer that part, it's our job to make it clear to folks, if indeed we decide to do this, what it is, why we're doing it, and so on and so forth. All your points are well made and worth considering. Are we ready to vote now?
And I was going to say, in answer, I agree that you can't just have a holiday. Many young students, I know Dr. Martin Luther, I didn't know him personally, I know what it meant to, when Dr. Martin Luther King was marching and what he advocated for. These younger kids necessarily don't, but they know they get a day off. So again, it's not just whether it's Diwali, whether it's Dr. Martin Luther King, the Christmas, most of the kids, and the Thanksgivings, they kind of know. But true, you have to enforce it in terms of the learning situation. If you don't, they just look at it as, well, in their case, it's going to be a day off anyway. Black Friday.
So we're educators. If we're going to go ahead and do this, our job is to educate. So are we ready to vote? Bonnie, go ahead, roll call, please.
Mrs. Delaney.
I'm voting aye.
Mrs. McBride?
No.
Ms. Mungo? Mr. Ritter?
No.
Dr. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Mourning?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bova?
Aye.
And Mrs. Sarucci?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, for a robust and thoughtful conversation, and I suspect we'll revisit this at some point in the future, and once again, let's do it the same way.
May I ask a question? Moving on. Can I ask a question? So I appreciate everyone talking to us, that, you know, we have reached out to, if we can help or bring more attention to these, I don't want to say holidays, but special days, please bring it to our attention. I know, I'm going to say Mr. Gottman is standing out there. He wanted a certain specific holiday when he was on the board, and we voted against it, not realizing that a resolution should have. it, not realizing that a resolution should have been brought forth, which he did not. So I want to say that's probably, and is the reason why it did not pass. So from now on, a resolution would have to be brought to the board for us to entertain these ideas.
Yes, ma'am. Then we do what we just did.
Thank you.
We reach out to the community. They give their input. We discuss it like adults who are in charge of this school district, and then we make a decision, and we live with those consequences. And then we move on to section E, which is the personnel agenda.
Personnel agenda?
We have two resignations.
New Personnel Director. For those of you just attend, just stand up, say aye. All right, get to it.
We have two resignations on the agenda, one of which is, as you're known, is Dr. Nor at Cleveland Stewart. We are in the process of interviewing candidates for his predecessor, or for his successor. We have five leave of absences in which I reviewed with Personal Department, made sure that every document is submitted as needed. Additionally, one transfer and two individuals for employment. We have various supplementals that are listed at the bottom of the page here and into the next, or coach into the next page. I also would like to propose, based on board policy, for me to make the recommendations for the supplemental for music, and then formally have it on the agenda for the next meeting that we have. I know that was a hot topic that we were trying to get addressed sooner than later. So myself, Eric, and Eric Lasik, and Mike Mateo worked diligently this week to try to get that resolved.
So where exactly are we on this?
We have recommendations for the board. We weren't able to get it on the agenda because we didn't finalize everything until this morning, but we spent all of yesterday interviewing candidates and then slept on it and pre-convened this morning to make sure that we felt good about the recommendations we were going to bring forward.
We will email the board the candidacy information tomorrow morning. We will add those names to our special meeting for hiring purposes on the 15th. What we'd be looking for from the board is, of course, most appearances and everything is proved, that we can move forward with the rehearsals, taking of the music school itself.
Do you question? One question on the leave of absences. There is. Motion to approve.
That was Mary Beth.
Okay, on the questions, after the leave of absences, you have approved a request to rescind. Did we talk about that, or did we just bypass that one?
No, I apologize. I bypassed it. We have an individual who previously submitted and was approved for sabbatical for spring semester of this year and then followed next year. She has since rescinded that.
Just wanted to bring it to the attention.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Section E, conferences and conventions. Conferences, Dr. Cheeky, you can take this.
Under section E, we have four conferences, one individual to attend the Boys Town Training. It'll be virtual, and three other individuals attending the past vote conference.
So moved. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Section F, Administrator Report, Secondary Education. Dr. Cheeky.
Item number one, recognize the following district booster clubs and support organizations who have properly submitted applications to the district for the 2223 fiscal year.
Item number two, to approve the following agreement with Deveraux and TCB Community Services Agreement as displayed in Exhibit A.
Item number three, approval to pay district section B one list of bills for the month of December 2022. Note, the list of bills will be compiled and emailed to the board for review on December 14, 2022. The board will have until the close of business on December 21st, 2022, to review the list of bills and to ask any questions regarding the payments. The vendor check payments will be then mailed to vendor on December 22nd, 2022, just in time for Christmas. Item four, acceptance and release of the district's June 30th, 2022 audited financial statements for the 2122 fiscal year. Approve the acceptance of the district's June 30th, 2022 audited financial statements, including supplemental information, annual single audit report package as prepared by the district local auditors for the 2122 fiscal year, and authorize the release of applicable statements and reports as required by the federal, state, and various oversight agencies parced in summer 31st, 2022, and the March 31st, 2023 reporting deadlines. Note, the audited financial statements will be emailed to the board for review as soon as the documents is completed by the district local auditors and prior to the formal release by December 31st, 2022. Item five, approval of the Tricog Land Bank's notice of proposed property dispositions for three Marovo properties and one Pickarren property located within the Gateway School District. Item six, approve the Gateway Fitness Trail run Gateway School District campus per the attached map. Michael, can you pull up the map, please? Approve the Gateway Fitness Trail to be built around Gateway School District campus. The trail will be constructed under the direction of Dr. James Pottinger, along with students from the Mountain Bike Club. The benefits of the proposed trail is that every student has an opportunity to participate. Community service opportunity for students, a safe place to ride a bike, run, or walk for the community. This is a side note. I did reach out to our insurance carrier, A.J. Gallagher, and they're requiring us to have some policies related to this for science, maintenance, things of that nature. I'll work with Dr. Short to get some policies for the board's review in our next meeting. Item seven, acceptance of the district donation received during the 2223 fiscal year. Item one, donor's choice, $1,500 for Dr. Cleveland Stewart Elementary for students and staff. A massive prior donation for outdoor seating. We have $3,000 available for Cleveland Stewart. McDonald's donated meals to families in need, also Cleveland Stewart Elementary.
Second, we, since we're under donations, Mr. Dyke?
Yes. As I indicated to you last month. I said to you last month, I want to support this. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that the insurance company is looking at with John Desai. I think this is going to become a virtual classroom. I mean, people could use this, your cross-country teams. What's that? I'm getting half the money this month and half next month. Dr. Short, there it is.
Can I say one?
We will let Mr. Dyke be the first one to write his bike one. Thank you.
When I mentioned to the insurance company, you were making a donation. They said they could give a thousand dollar donation as well.
Wow.
Very nice. Thank you. I don't think everyone heard that. Can you say that again, Mike?
When I mentioned to the insurance carrier, A.J. Gallagher, that Dyson Associates was donating a thousand, $1,500, right? They didn't match, but they gave us a thousand dollars towards the trail.
Wonderful. Well, see.
Anyone else out there?
I'll donate a thousand.
Anyone else? Two thousand. Cheryl. Yes, you do. Well, thank you, Ms. Mungo.
Thank you.
Wow, this is marvelous. Hey, wait, he didn't sign that. Hold on. I'm just kidding. All right. So do we have any other questions on any of this?
Yes. On this McDonald's one, the miscellaneous, is that donor's choice also?
No, that was a typo. I'm sorry. I didn't tell you that.
All right. No, because I know McDonald's, they donated the meals, and it was distributed amongst all the elementary schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mrs. McBride?
Aye.
Ms. Mungo?
Aye.
Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Dr. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Warning?
Aye, except for number five.
Mrs. Sarucci? Aye. Mrs. Delaney? Aye.
Move on to resolutions presented by board members. I don't think we have any others, right? No. So comments from residents on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone?
Jack, before we open that, I think it might be timely right now to ask Heather if she would introduce the vote we're going to be holding in a week or two on this consulting contract, because when she describes that to us, this might be a good time for some of the residents who are here to offer their feedback and comment on it. So Heather, there's a residence educational consulting contract. Would you describe that for us, please?
On the agenda, we just did that.
Is this the consulting contract we're going to bring in, folks from the outside? Okay, so do I have the name wrong?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, Deveraux was the company that was actually doing the consulting.
Maybe a real quick synopsis of what that is.
Just very brief synopsis of what Deveraux is going to be bringing to our district.
So Deveraux, okay. Deveraux is a contract that was just on the agenda for today. It is an advanced behavioral health service that works with TCB, which is a local internal Creek Valley community that works with our student assistance program, and they have partnered. Deveraux has been located out in Philadelphia in Reading for years, and they work for school districts out that way. And they are moving out of construction to help support school districts and supporting students with mental and behavioral health needs that we're seeing. And as we know with the pandemic, pandemic had happened and it changes, and our students and what we're seeing within are bringing to the school, and it's providing additional supports in our school system to support those students. It will be providing registered behavior technicians in our school district to help support any students that may be behaviorers or need additional support in the classroom. They'll be working with our staff and our students in conjunction with our behavior specialists, and they'll also be providing some consultation services into our classrooms and providing additional support in those classrooms.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So let's move on to, we had no comments, right? Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bova. Just wanted to provide everyone with an update. We have been meeting regularly with the project over Gateway Middle School. It is currently on track, and we have some roofing issues that we're working through. Our name, Mr. Brown, is in the audience here. We will be working or meeting with the roofers on Thursday to resolve that issue, but we had a contractor meeting last week, and they assured us, once the roof is fixed and repaired, everything is on track. And we will be having a, the open ground meeting where we'll be able to relay further information, some aerial photographs as well. Also, if you noticed, the lights were on up at the fields of Gateway High School. They have been working through the rain over the last couple of days and the last week. It also has some beautiful weather as well. Two of the fields are almost complete, the baseball and softball field. So it's a tremendous project, and will benefit our kids moving into the spring weather. Also, to our students, we need to buckle down. We know that there's significant learning loss coming out of the pandemic. We are constantly advocating for our children to jump in on the tutoring that we're offering. There is a strong push for that. We do provide busing, and you will hear more about that as we continue to move forward. So I do want to make that known to our parents and our community members out there. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Do you get on the board committee reports? Anyone want to jump up first or go around the horn? What do you want to do?
I'm going to bring something up. Micah, do you have the video I had asked?
The video or the PowerPoint?
I'm sorry. Just from the grief awareness day, Mrs. Tortorella?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. McBride and myself went to the guidance advisory committee meeting along with Dr. Short and Dr. Cheeky and Dr. Rossi and several of the other administrators. And Mrs. Tortorella did a fantastic job on this, but I wanted to just share with the grief awareness day that what she had, I think Micah's going to probably. That's it. Thank you.
Hey, one second.
They have a place at the high school called the Caring Place, and the students go if they need something, they go there and receive what they need, whether it's talking. And I just wanted to share with some of the things that they did with grief awareness day.
Okay, I'm ready.
Is there a sound?
You don't hear it? Is that better?
Thank you. We have a great district here, and we try to support everyone. So I just want to thank everyone, you know, for what they do. And everyone, if you're not with us for the next meeting, have a good holiday. And everyone, uh, if you're not with us at the next meeting, have a good holiday.
Thank you, Mrs. Delaney.
Um, I just wanted to make a few comments. It's, it's interesting when you look online, they have a number of so-called holidays during the month of December, such as National Chocolate Covered Anything Day. Yeah, and, and National Fruitcake Day. That one's okay. My grandmother loves to make great fruitcakes. Uh, December thirty-first is National Make Up Your Mind Day. I mean, it's, it's amazing, some of the things. Nash, December sixth, which is today, Put On Your Own Shoes Day. But of the things that are important when I think of holidays, like tomorrow and December seventh is Pearl Harbor. And I have always, from my family members who have been in the military to my husband, is military. I always, well, he died on December seventh, too. But so I always look at the, the holidays that appreciate and respect our veterans for what they've done, those that have died, uh, for us to keep celebrating freedom and, and that's important. Also in black history, on this day, December sixth, the Thirteenth Amendment was read by eighteen sixty-five for those that are history buffs. And also on this day in eighteen seventy, the first black in the House of Representatives was sworn in. Just a, a few of those. And when we talked about holidays around the world, we know Christmas, but there is also uh, Hanukkah, which is, uh, during this season as well. Many aren't familiar with Kwanzaa. We haven't put a holiday into that. But that is also celebrated right after the day after Christmas and also the day after Christmas Boxing Day. And some of you've heard of that if you've traveled and you've also in the United Kingdom and as well as in the various islands. They celebrate a Boxing Day on December twenty-sixth. But it's just to kind of make you aware there. Yes, I do believe in diversity. I believe in inclusion. I believe in all those things that we may see as being different. But we have, there's so much that make us the same. And that's where I feel as a community and as a country, we want to focus on those things that unite us as opposed to those things that divide us. And after hearing on the news that in the last three years, there have been six hundred mass killing, you know, it breaks your heart, but there's still hope and you want to continue to believe that there will be peace on earth, not just in this country, but the world. So keep that in mind as we continue to celebrate, go into these holidays and God bless you whether you're celebrating Christmas, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, uh, Diwali, whatever you're celebrating. Just keep that in mind that we just want to be united. We can't. But thank you.
Mrs. Sarucci?
I have nothing else. Susan said it. Said it well.
Mr. Williams?
Just wish everybody happy holidays. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, son. Dr. Singh?
Oh, I want to thank everyone for their hearts. And, um, it's very humbling for me, all your support. And, um, all I can say is I try to be better school board members from now onward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritter?
Nothing for me.
And, uh, first of all, I did forget to mention, we had an executive session. So we, so we had an executive session to discuss, uh,
legal.
legal things, uh, at five-thirty tonight. And, um, I'd just like to thank everyone for giving me another year as president. I'll do my best to be better. Uh, we spent a lot of time this past year putting out fires and, um, obviously talking about construction projects which are critical. Uh, personally, I'd like to see us refocus on education. Uh, you know, the whole world seems to be aware that our students have suffered particularly in reading and math, largely because of the pandemic. We've got wonderful educators here. We've got wonderful students and families. Uh, we can get all those great brains together and figure out, we're not going to solve it in one semester, one year even, but we have to begin that incremental, uh, process. And I've been told we have some, uh, we have a number of elementary schools, you know, some are doing a little better than others. Like to find out the ones that are doing well, why? What are they doing better? Uh, what could we learn from them? What could we learn from them that we can transfer? And, uh, that's it. So everyone have a great holiday season, however you choose to celebrate it. And, uh, we'll see you again next year, right? Unless you're here for the fifteenth or sixteenth.
Special hiring meeting on fifteenth, yeah.
Oh, she made the second one in favor of her German and say aye, aye. Thank you.